I had that one, yeah, I couldn't find.
I was so not clocked, I'd like to call order the regular scheduled council meeting in June two thousand twenty three.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, unconditionally, under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm breaking down the agenda. I have a number three dream instructions. We have bills.
Yeah, so I'm filling in for Robert here. So for the noisy crowd on the audience, just reminder, um, the speaker can pick up noise, although we don't have any other participants on, so really, uh, um, you shouldn't have that problem today, but I do have, uh, go in record. It's all truncated there since there's no other video.
Yeah, thanks, David. Um, item four, interdictors.
Guy, round industry utility superintendent. Nathan Stryker, clerk treasurer, seven eight three South Clear Lake Drive.
Molly Weber, eight twenty-two, South Clear Lake Drive, member at large.
Dan Rippey, one twenty-six, Lakeside Court, Ward two.
Darren Thornton, twelve thirty-six, Quiet Harbor Drive, Ward three.
Brent Slusser, ninety-five, Penner Drive, at large.
George Finkel, one twenty-four, West Clear Lake, uh, Ward one, for Silver and Tommy.
Joanna, two oh eight, West Clear Lake, filling in for Robert Holiday, consulting in management.
All right, moving on, approval of the monthly agenda. The additions or corrections, uh, not an entertaining motion.
If Molly, I'll make a motion to accept the agenda as published.
Brandon will second that.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Moving on, item number six, approval of monthly reports. You all received the minutes from May sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Whether any additions or corrections, if not, an entertaining motion to approve.
Now, this is George, and I would move to approve the minutes as written.
This is Brandon, I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. What was the standard design? Motion carries. Uh, item B, may voucher register in the warrant, Nathan?
Uh, good afternoon, everybody, um. You know, here for this month has been confirmed from May seventeenth through June sixteenth, there were forty-three general transactions for a total of fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventeen thirteen cents. There were sixteen sewer transactions for fifty-five thousand nine 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 and six cents. Um, see right here, Guy Rogers, just let me know that, uh, one correction needs to be made. If you look, and this is one thing I was gonna bring to everybody's attention. Uh, May eighteenth, TriStar pipe and supply was a big transaction that was approved at the, uh, town council, like, even March, with the purchase of new breaker pumps, thirty-seven thousand six ninety-three thirty-three cents. That has, uh, listed in the general section sewer transaction, that's what's at the bottom, sewer transactions. Um, one other thing is the selective insurance payment. You see that on the general sites on very last, uh, transaction on the first page, three thousand two ninety-two, that's premium for this quarter, that's gonna be going through. Uh, other than that, one other thing that George didn't bring my attention to that is a little different on this voucher. Farmer State Bank Visa on the twenty-fourth of May, uh, thirteen seventy-one forty-five cents, there was the same registration for eight hundred. Was a major portion of that, well, that was for the ARPA funds and the registration that I had to do that. The other portion of that, no, was just off the supplies, and we actually were able to close out a card. If you look down a little more, I choose first, this, uh, credit card actually spelled K through his name on it, so I was able to close this card out, but this last payment opened up a new card with my name, uh, with my name on it. So those are the three main things I want. Those things I would ask the council to approve this bounty for one hundred thirteen thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars and nineteen cents.
Nathan, before we approve it, um, I'd like to ask one question, then I also have a comment. Go ahead. Uh, question is, of the thirty-seven thousand six ninety-three in pumps, how many pumps did we buy? Well, well, okay, thank you. And then the, the comment, uh, just for everybody's, uh, information, the breach alert, uh, we're, you're being billed annually, uh, twelve, twelve hundred and ninety-six dollars. Uh, that allows a seventy-five thousand alerts, which sounds like a ton, but when you start dividing it by months and three hundred and sixty residents, it comes down to about nine alerts per month, so we just need to be vigilant. I don't think we have a problem, but we just need to make sure that our alerts are town-related and significant that we don't burn out our residents with too many alerts. And I don't know, Nathan, if there's a law, public alerts when Jen publishes, she should keep a logbook of the date and who initiated it. And so that we just sort of have a running total towards that seventy-five.
Yeah, this serves as a good example, because today I think we sent out two reach alerts about the cycle, okay? And we sent out, you know, two today, a couple next week, it, it had one hundred and sixty, I believe, so I think that beginning to register exactly which reach alerts when we sent it, it's a very good idea, not to have a competition.
I didn't have a problem with that.
I'll have a competition, change more, starting.
I believe reach alert provides a, a report on how many.
It's okay.
Hopefully we can access it, we can look at that little screen here.
Yeah.
And it might be things that should go on the website instead of a reach alert, I mean, depending on where we do that.
Remember, after the holiday, Memorial Day holiday, we have an issue with the trash pickup. We issued a couple on that day, so, you know, when things come up, we need to evaluate whether or not issue a reach alert. It's like, to your points, we don't. It's over too much, it's not being attentive.
Great, thanks.
Just a question on that, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Um, if we go over that much, is there a?
There's an option.
Of set a fee for over.
We had the invoice pulled up today, and it says there is a fee if you start going over seventy-five thousand, doesn't say exactly what the fee, I think it's per, because it's two dollars per resident, six hundred and fifty residents have on the invoice, that's two dollars per resident, so I don't think that's two dollars per text message, but I think it's probably associated in there, so I can look that up by now.
Sure.
Yep.
Yeah, I had one question. On May twenty-fifth, for Larry's lock, it was a lock fix, building repair. Is that something that was tampered, or we just had a lock that needed re?
Yes, the bugs crawled in there and we had the lock all gummed up, and it wasn't locking, it wasn't unlocking, and several of us face planted into the door.
Okay.
And I think he fixed all the other.
He did, he went around and serviced all the locks while he was here.
No, that's great. I didn't know if it was vandalism, and we needed to WD forty locks on.
No, do not, we, no, we don't, we do not leave these locks here. We called Larry's to let him do it, because I get yelled at the last time I did it. You're supposed to use oilless foil on these locks. Well, and that's the main door that all of us go in and out of. Right, so.
No, that's okay. I was just asking, I saw lock face, and I didn't know it should be.
Any other questions?
It's Molly, I'll make a motion to approve the, about May voucher as presented.
This is George, and I will second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Moving on, unfinished business, um, item A, golf cart update.
Okay, uh, well, I'm actually gonna tie in the golf cart and the parking ordinance on the other one. Um, the golf cart is, both are in the Hawks' hands. The golf cart is in much better shape. I don't think we should have to do too much to that one. The parking ordinance, we had difficulty finding a work document that included the entire parking ordinance in it. So what we did was take the portions that we all agreed, had a general consensus on the changes, and those are in the Hawks' hands, asking for guidance on the advertisement, so that we can move forward and have it as an action item in the July meeting. So I might have to do a little bit more work on the parking one, but it's close.
Any questions? Well, they are, item B, HR hiring update, George.
Uh, my agenda, CCMG update. But that's, I'll take it.
From my agenda.
Yeah, that's, that's an old.
Wow.
It was, okay, it was updated.
Oh, I just printed it up at the same time, so.
All righty, I thought I had thirty seconds, retrieve her, but I'll get right into it.
All right.
That's, no, I'm, I'm ready. Uh, we are continuing to search for a street utility worker, uh, so far through Indeed, uh, we've had a total of eighty-six candidates. Um, of those eighty-six, we made one job offer, uh, a candidate that both Guy and I thought was acceptable. Uh, once we got down to discussing drugs, which we now discussed at the start of the interview, and then at the end of the interview, uh, we found out that he was a certified drug user and proud of it, so, uh, didn't make the difference. Uh, we also made an offer to a candidate who was really first class, and he took a job, uh, in Hillsdale in Curtis Town. Uh, I have one candidate that I'm waiting to set up, and I, I interviewed two candidates over the weekend, one noon on Sunday and one four o'clock on Monday. And the Monday guy is a hot guy, and I discussed him, and this doesn't meet our needs, so I went and turned, sent him a turned out letter. Uh, the Sunday guy, I'm reaching out to him for an interview with Guy, and waiting to hear back from him. So, and then, uh, that being said, I still have four candidates, I'm digging deep in the pile, going down below what normally would be, you know, not to interview, and, uh, to save Guy time, I'm just doing a preliminary interview to see if they're worth Guy's time or not. And well, it remains, we see, and I got one set up for an interview, uh, later this week, and I got three others, I'm waiting to hear back. So, we still have a, a live pool, our Indeed app has run out, I'm gonna let a little dust settle for, find until the end of the week, and then rerun the ad just to see, uh, when we ran the, ran the second ad, we got forty-one, uh, responses, and, uh, so it's, it's not like we're, we're at the bottom of the pool, we're still getting responses, but we just haven't found the person yet. Questions?
Yeah, do we need to move quicker after you two find somebody? Do we need to be ready and have an executive session? And I mean, does speed, do you think speed matters, or some of these folks going?
The one, the one that took the job in Hillsdale, I was literally before he got back home, I called him to set up the interview, it was right there in Memorial, it was, well, Wednesday, Wednesday, Thursday, maybe before Memorial Day, and we set it up for Tuesday, and he declined us on, like, ten thirty Tuesday, we're done.
So between that, that time, yeah.
But, but we do need, um, I was waiting a day or two, and then take, bringing their, their resumes over to Guy, and what I'm doing now, as soon as I get a resume, I'm emailing them to him right away. And, uh, so we'll, we'll shut that down if, if, uh, when Guy gets it, we need to flip that in twenty-four hours, thumbs up, thumbs down, set up the interview. If Guy can't, I will, and just clues the guy to see if he meets our needs, if he does, then get Guy in, and we'll do the closing. When that happens, special council meeting immediately, as, as quick as we can be. Yeah, times of yes.
You guys are getting lots of practice.
I didn't need that kind of practice.
Also finding out what kind of people you're out there. Well, that's my neck, that, that leads me to my question. We obviously used one source to get the resumes, is it time to try a different source?
Well, I think we're getting a pretty good population, uh, and on Jen's desk, it's the stack of the resumes that, that, uh, in the last three weeks, we rejected, we're laying on our desktop, leaf through and see what they are. I did, uh, reach out to, and the names slipped me right now, uh, two other services, and their, their, for a fee. I, I sent to their name, their numbers, uh, it's sixteen dollars a day and fourteen dollars a day, and they're on this for a month, and it's gonna be an expensive proposition. I am, I am very happy with Indeed, as a matter of fact, I'm absolutely shocked by the number of resumes and some of the qualifications. One of the hiccups that we're getting into is this thirty-minute, uh, twenty-mile, um, line that we, that we have threshold out there, uh, getting qualified folks out of Sturgis, too far, Bronson, too far, uh, couple places over Ohio, so we're having to kick some out because of distance, but we're still, I think we're getting quality, uh, candidates. Certainly our results wouldn't prove it right now, but I think they're out there. We just, we do need to be quicker, and get one, yes, next week or so.
Well, maybe if we have somebody even, like, within forty-five minutes, or I, I mean, I understand that time is not the essence, but also having somebody in the position is also important. Um, this can only, you know, go on, so would it be viable to maybe expand that as part of the criteria and see where we end up?
In my experience, if you go, you know, thirty, thirty-five minutes, okay, that puts you Sturgis, Bronson area. And, okay, that person's got a friend in White Pigeon or, 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 okay, now they're another half hour, forty-five minutes away, oh, son, they're two hours before they could be here.
But it could also go the opposite. They could have a friend in Angola and be here in twenty minutes, so I guess I would just say, if we're gonna assume the worst, then let's assume the positive and kind of mean in the middle, and just see where we get. I, and it may not make a difference, I don't know, but I'm just, if, if that is a criteria, and maybe that's something that when we get to a point of the job offer, we have a conversation on what that might look like, especially when they're on call.
Mm-hmm.
Again, I misunderstood what George said, are these getting candidates that are just outside our area? You're getting.
We're, we're, the, the majority of our candidates are within our area. Uh, but we did turn down some, some quality individuals, we didn't interview them, but just on paper, from Sturgis, Bronson, and a few other, uh, Allen, uh, Michigan, we had a guy out of, and that's just too far.
Yeah, I think Molly's wanting to open the aperture to, to see if there are others. I guess my question was, are we getting those, or are we just getting a, a, a few? Do you think if we open the aperture, we'll get a lot more?
I would get, there are a lot more, we'll get some more.
Than what you're saying now.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, because Allen's not that far if you're on the other side of the lake. You know, if you're over at Sandpoint, you can get to Allen in thirty minutes. If you're over here, maybe not.
From my house to my parents, and they live south of Allen, it's forty minutes. Absolutely.
I, I know I can get to Allen in thirty minutes, but.
Yes.
Um, but, you know, I, my point is getting from one side of the lake to the other, I mean, for me to get to Darren's, you know, I go out on the highway, just like I knew to come here. I, I'm just saying, if it might give us a little bit more selection, and if there have been quality candidates that are just ten more minutes out, or fifteen more minutes out, and they meet everything else, you know, obviously, if they don't meet the other criteria, no, but if that's the only criteria that they're missing on, and you both
Mm-hmm.
feel like they're a strong candidate, I would propose that we bring them in for an interview.
Well, we've overstretched that a couple of times for interviews. I'll open that screen up and.
I mean, because how long's it been? I mean, you're two months?
Uh, two months, yeah, yeah, it's over, over two months, yeah.
I mean, it's, that's, it's not sustainable, not for you, Guy, not, especially when you get into some of your other busy seasons, I mean, we're busy here, but.
I do got one, one guy from North Carolina, who's moving to Northeast Indiana. He has worked fourteen years for the city of Washington, Washington, North Carolina. He applied through Indeed, I've talked to him on the phone a couple of times, and he's in the process of relocating to our area here. As soon as he lands, he's gonna give me a call. If I don't hear from him, probably tomorrow or Thursday, I'm gonna ring him again and see how the move is going. But he has done street and sewer for the town of Washington for fourteen years, and is there any expectations? We're right in the middle of ours. So, are we lucky? I'll let you know.
Which is, might have a sense on it. We have the thirty-minute criteria for our lineup, and we've never had an issue with it. Right, so right on that border, I mean, I'm thirty-two minutes door to door, we had people, but then Hamilton, yeah, throwing away with our revenue, so if, if we have to stretch that, I'm opposed to opening that up.
I'll do that, I'll open the screen a little more, sort of, see if we can come up with and discuss it and put it out and do that. The council for discussion.
I think it's essential, of what Molly said, though, should we go that route, that it is clear during the interview process during the on-call times? Because there's definitely gonna be situations where Guy is not gonna be able to be alone there by himself.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, guys.
Have you got other thoughts?
Yeah, I've, I've tried by getting people from other spots, firing them.
Who's building and trades teacher now, Mr. Kirk, now that it's at Prairie Heights?
I actually have been in contact with the superintendent at Camden Schools, talking to him about guys that were in my daughter's graduating class, and guys that graduated a year before, and but, and talking to the people reading Quincy, you know. But nobody really, they've either already found something, or they went to Cal, so. You guys, now Mr. Kirk's even a feature for a lot anymore. Okay, well, thank you for the discussion, and we'll charge on.
Yeah.
Yep, thank you guys for your efforts.
Yep.
All right, moving on, item C, reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash ten. Bill, so me and that's you.
Yeah, or do you want to? Robert, should you want to do this one, or? Uh, sure, I, I can read it, uh, reading the ordinance, and the change order or just the ordinance? I was told by Robert that we need to read the ordinance and, and vote at a council meeting. All right, well, I, I will do that. Um, today we have ordinance twenty twenty-three dash ten, an ordinance amending the Clear Lake United Development Ordinance, whereas on September one, two thousand and nine, the Unified Development Ordinance officially replaced all previous zoning and subdivision control ordinances. Whereas, the Unified Development Ordinance has been amended on several occasions since its adoption. Whereas, on May second, twenty twenty-three, the Clear Lake Plan Commission held a hearing addressing portions of the tech of amended United uh, Development Ordinance that required further amendments, and whereas, the Clear Lake Plan Commission, after proper notice and hearing, as required by statute, certified the text to change the Unified Development Ordinance as amended on May second, twenty twenty-three, which are, which are attached heretofore as Exhibit A, with a favorable recommendation to the Town Council of the Town of Clear Lake. Now, therefore be it ordained by the Town Council of the Town of Clear Lake that the text changes to the United Development Ordinance, unified, excuse me, Unified Development Ordinance, which are attached heretofore as Exhibit A, are hereby adopted and incorporated into the Unified Development Ordinance by the Town of Clear Lake, of, by the Town Council of Clear Lake. That is the ordinance shall be in full force and effective on June twentieth, twenty twenty-three, passed and adopted by the Town Council of the Town of Clear Lake, Indiana on this day, twenty, the day of June twenty twenty-three. Oh, read it, okay, read it all, okay, uh, council members, Darren Thorpe, board member, Ann Rippey, board member, Brent Slusser, board member, Holly Weber, board, board member, George Finkel, board member, Nathan Stryker, clerk treasurer.
Just to be safe, I think we should make a motion to open it to the public first, so I would make that motion.
It's Molly, I'll second Frank's motion to open the public comment.
Are you done? I'll make a motion to close.
Molly, I'll second that.
Motion and a second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Just to be safe, I also, you know, we should make a motion for a second reading by.
Molly, I'll approve that, second then.
Motion and a second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign.
Reading the ordinance entitled only, this is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash ten, an ordinance amending the Clear Lake Unified Development Ordinance.
This is Brent, I will make a motion to approve.
It's Molly, I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign.
And admittedly, everybody, we have signatures and everything except for Dan, I think you were out, so I'll pass it on for Dan and then.
Thank you, thank you all, I appreciate that, thank you.
All right, uh, moving on, we have no new business, so we'll move on to, I have nine monthly reports, financial report, thank you.
Yeah, I made the, uh, final report, appropriation report, and revenue report available for the month, the full month of May, as I, uh, at your last month, I'm going to be making the previous, previous month reports available in, uh, next month, I'll state that, like, full month of May is all here for the final appropriation and. Um, as far as what I've been up to in the clerk treasurer's office, we begun, and I begun, went through ordinances, which hasn't been done, I talked to American League all of the last update, I think it was in two thousand eighteen, um, so what I'm doing is I'm going through all the old uh, media books, and trying to categorize and, uh, get everything prepared to send out to American people to get that certified. Um, also, I did two different days of webinars for budget, your pay. Those are very informative. Our first date was June thirtieth to have things uploaded for the two thousand twenty-four budget, I have all that stuff, we did. Next week, I'll be four white for my annual training, that's gonna be two full days, four white. Um, another thing that we've been working on this week, uh, I've been working with Stephanie at Selective Insurance, we've been redoing our guys' policy. After we did the renewal on May sixth, she went through policy and noticed there's things that hadn't been looked at for a year or two, so I talked to Guy this morning, and I go around getting serial numbers, getting all the information to get that policy completely updated. Let's take a look, and track these down, and just make sure everything's on the issue. Definitely capable of items. Uh, it's like, we're going through the trackers and attachments, and all those different types of things are out, and she's wanted to make sure that we have everything covered, and obviously we want to make sure we're ready. So. Uh, if you guys have any questions, so we had some. Uh, if you guys have any questions, so we had some. Uh, but that's kind of what we have to rely on.
So does that in terms of a possible increase? Any escapes?
We, we have not seen any. We were just talking to her today. Where the leafback chili had listed for a couple. Twenty seven, twenty seven, like seventy. We're gonna get that up to eighty thousand, I believe is what guys guys said. So once she makes those appropriate changes. Adjustments to the policy book. Right now, I don't, I don't.
I think it's those insurance replacement costs. Or is it insured at uh. Prorated. That the leafback should be true this replacement, I would think. That is why we went to where the price we went to. Considering I priced. That doesn't, it doesn't mean.
Yeah, yeah, it's like God was saying, it's not just one copy of the bills.
Well, no, it needs to, you need to make sure it's insured as a as a replacement insurance, not. Correct, just. Grow rated. I'll make sure this is.
It's there at that low dollar rate, you didn't know that was for.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I've got um. A couple. One is when you're out of the office for those couple of days for primary, we know John's gonna be in the office till cancel the. And then um, for Brent and I on the fire is whenever you get the L I T percentage for twenty twenty four. If you could just let us know so we can move forward. Um, cuz that's. We know he doesn't get it till June or July, but we need that before we can move forward with Fremont Fire Department.
Skipping ahead just a little bit, technologies, but that, like after our last meeting with the Fremont Fire Department. That's what we're holding, holding uh, to be able to move on to the next stage, because I'm understanding that.
Well, you might, you might.
You might not get it till five.
Yeah, just when you get it, let us know so we can move forward with the fire contract. Let's write down, we're in a holding pattern.
But um, we'd be interested, we being the some budgets committee would be interested in any of the latest information on that. Contract, so that we can make sure.
As soon as, well, we need that number before we.
Before we can. Go. So if it remains unchanged, let's.
It won't remain, and it won't remain unchanged. There's an, there will be an increase that we found in the state says L I T. Change will be.
Uh, you should be, my plan is if that doesn't, if we. I got ten percent. Okay, thanks. I got ten percent. Okay, so we. Because it's not gonna be. We're gonna be below ten, but it's not gonna, it's probably not gonna be below five. All I'm trying to do is support the budgeting process and be uh, respectful of figuring out. These events are in wanting a range that we can work with to get sticked on. And if it's ten percent over last year, it's. Yeah, then definitely we give the range five to ten, because we know it's probably not gonna be below five, and we know it's probably not gonna be above. So that's a fair range for budgeting, and we'll definitely keep you guys in the loop and let you know as we move forward in the process.
And we know it'll be a full time year.
That's already been agreed to. Current appropriation in twenty twenty three is thirty four thousand. Is that on this year's contract?
Thirty four?
Thirty four.
Now, what was in the budget?
That's what's, yeah, that's the appropriation of the budget.
Was the wrong number. What was.
Is it more or less?
It's more, it's two thousand dollars more than what, what did it know?
I've got it.
Um, Nathan already corrected it. If you're looking off a current.
Yeah, I'm looking off our. So Nathan's already made the adjustment. Thirty four is this year. Thirty, okay, set up within the appropriation.
Yeah.
Or sorry, thirty four is what's in there, at thirty six.
Is what the number is?
Is what the number is.
Yes, the wrong number was put in with the initial twenty. Pretty much it was done. But Nathan has corrected it and moved. The money. To fix that error.
All right, anything else for Nathan? Okay, moving on. Item B, Marshall's report.
Uh, from the May. Full of one hundred and seventy one hours. Seven hundred and ninety four miles driven. I'll break down. And there were forty four hours uh, work on the lake. Um, as far as the mileage, we had three hundred and twenty four miles on the Durango and four hundred and seventy miles on the Tahoe. All miles should be on the Durango from now on, it must be the Tahoe for the. That's coming up for. Uh, police department had four cases. Sheriff's Office had one case within the town and four cases. The township, police department had three traffic violations, three golf cart violations. Uh, two boating violations, uh, nineteen golf carts were inspected and/or renewed. By vehicle inspection from time. Uh, I went ahead and I'll get down to the break. Um, on the breakdown of the cases, um. There was one alarm, one welfare check. One medical and one suspicious. Sheriff's Office and pounders, oneistic. And for the sheriff's office and the township, there were two property damage crashes, one suspicious complaint and one purple engine crash. Um. Went ahead and got a quote for solar panels to be added to the. Radar signs on Penner Drive and South Clear Lake Drive. Since we're up to ten radar signs, um, we don't need to move those two around anymore. So to cut down on the maintenance of the batteries, change the amount and everything. Uh, I've got a quote for one thousand one hundred dollars. I went and ordered those. Those actually should be in this week sometime. Uh, once they're in, we'll uh, we're gonna get them installed. We're going to replace. The metal boat that those combined, we want with wind boats. That way they can hold the solar panels better. Um, so hopefully the next month we'll have that done. Uh, just been a little get the. Panels in and then Guy gets the. Post thought and switched out for me. Um, we were actually able to come across uh, the town of Fremont. Police Department had two police bicycles. Um, we were actually, we actually bought one of them for three hundred dollars. It's a trek bicycle, a retail value of that was about eighteen hundred dollars. Uh, we had it checked out down Fort Wayne at the bike shop down there. Um, they estimated the value of it. Currently it's about fifteen hundred dollars, we got it for three hundred. Uh, so it's really good shape. It's got the license sirens on it. Uh, so that is actually out in the garage now. Um, we had to order a couple of things. Um, I went local through bike and soul to get a helmet. Um, needed a new pump for it. And then the charger for the batteries for the license sirens that actually just got in today, so we'll get that picked up today or tomorrow. And then um. Alex has already been asking about wanting to ride it, so hopefully he should be out on a bicycle. Here in the next week or so. Um, we're gonna see how that works out before we. Go further and look at getting an e-bicycle, because the cost of the e-bike is about six thousand dollars. For this three hundred dollars for a regular bicycle, um, we'll see how the usage of that bicycle works out. Make a determination if we wanna spend the money for an e-bicycle or not. And I talked to the couple of the marshals. I have an e-bike and I'm gonna let a couple of them borrow it, see if they like it.
Yeah.
Compared, so.
Gives us another avenue for the police to be able to patrol. In a more silent fashion as well.
Yes, so we'll say, we'll say how it works out. So I've got three out of the six marshals that they were definitely be interested in. Um, utilizing the bicycle.
Good model.
So I have, unless you have any questions.
I've got a couple of questions. Does a violation equal a ticket or does a, is a violation a warning?
Uh, it could be a, be a combination of a verbal warning and written warning or a uh, actual pay. And feedback locals. Thank you for showing on the breakdown of them.
And then of the two hundred and fifteen hours, how many of those were premium pay hours during Memorial Day weekend? And if you don't know, Chris, it's fine, but on the next report for July, if you could include that just so.
I remember off the top of my head.
But I, I, that's fine. Um. And then. On traffic, golf cart and boat, do you see a trend on what those violations were? Like, was it traffic speeding? Was it golf cart?
Uh, so the traffic violations for uh, traffic, uh. It was all speeding violations. The golf cart, um, I didn't get, we didn't have any under, we didn't see any underage underage ones. Um, those are all for. Um, not having a registration and or proper registration or not having the uh, slow moving vehicle on the back of some sort of like a registration type or equipment type violation. Um, the two boating violations, I believe. Um. One was for after hours, I mean, lights on, and the second one was for um. A jet ski where the jet ski was designed for two people. Um, but they were, had two people on the jet ski and they were towing or had a. A third person behind it, so it did a violation there, but that was, that one was for.
Thank you. I'm just curious of any trends. And then I guess why it sounds as though the marshals and deputies are finished with the Tahoe, generally speaking, um, as a rule of thumb, so. I guess I would just ask Nathan, I know. Um, from a mileage perspective, if we can start a mileage log and make sure we know the mileage in, the mileage out. The date, the destination, cuz I I've seen it not being used for. Town business, so if we can just make sure we're complying with IRS standards for a company vehicle.
I think Robert had, I thought Robert was giving a mileage log, but I could be wrong.
And and I just want to make sure that the mileage log is including not just, cuz I know in previous reports it was how many miles. But we need to include the destination and we need to include who has that out. Um, and the date and just, you know, and he might have all of that. I don't know, but now that you're, yeah, now that you guys are finished with it.
And you know, we're gonna use it again on.
And probably fireworks and.
Uh, I, I don't know, first, Nathan, I'm gonna at least have one of some of the Durango and then one of them, somebody on the lake.
And how's it, I do have a question. Happy with the Durango, everything?
Yeah, yeah.
Good thumbs up? They did a good job?
Yeah, awesome, perfect.
So you said in a conclusive manner that you've witnessed people using it for other than town business. Sounds like. You need to talk to George on that.
Have you done that?
No, I have not. It was just. Last week, yeah.
It's not right. Point.
Right.
Just to close the loop.
Yep, that sounds good.
Anything else for Chris?
No, thank you for answering all my questions. I didn't know if there were trends with some things.
I did tell Chris before the meeting started that the couple of signs on seven hundred. Making a notice board that we just had. What I've seen. Other than one motorcycle, one bike.
I know, it's somebody that walked over there and it has made a difference.
So, thank you.
They fly up lakeside tour on motorcycles. It's amazing that it's, it's a proof of acceleration.
Yes, trying to jump to hell.
Yeah.
Brian, each door between the pub and the Michigan run.
All right, moving on, uh, Fire Department report.
Okay, uh, as we discussed earlier, points of concern or note, Molly and I did have a very good meeting. With the Fremont Fire Park or. Fremont Fire Department, and we are moving forward in the negotiations. We are waiting to find out. From the state, some numbers that will help us move forward in this process. And it will go in front of the Fremont Board first. It needs to be approved via them after we finish the negotiations and then it will come to board on board. And we will continue to keep everybody abreast of the negotiations. The numbers that we are waiting on from the state could hit tomorrow. Or it could be the end of July. They typically come out sometime between the June and then in the July. Time period, so kind of like Molly mentioned earlier, on a holding pattern until we get that. Once we have that. We have tentative meetings already set up with the Fire Department and we'll be able to move rather quickly. We get this knocked out and in addition to that, like Molly said, we are going for a longer contract again. So we don't have to go through this area. All right, so now on to the data. We've got five mutual aids, which are included in the Clear Lake. Uh, Clear Lake section. But none of them were. Clear Lake, just so everybody realizes that. Also, we had one medical assist. We for the Clear Lake Township, we had two medical assists and one vehicle accident. Which on five. And if we look at the summary section. Right, turn it the right way. Bill noticed that the region totals are pretty consistent. Um, we're, we're sitting within a couple of events. We did have one blow in March. But everything else is within a couple incidents of each other. And a majority. Of the incidences are mutually within. The. Footprint of the Fremont Fire Department. Especially what we've learned with discussing with. Them, they're. A fairly, very highly thought of. Fire Department, would that be a fair way to put it, Molly? And. Multiple municipalities around the area are aware of it. And the Fremont Fire Department takes pride in making sure they can help because if something should happen on the place or in Angola. At one of the factories in Fremont. We need everybody else to help too, so.
Cause Fremont is one of the younger, more. Um. Physically able fire departments.
That's, that's a good way to put it. That's a good way to put it. So unless anybody has any questions uh. On the fire, so. What we got for this one?
All right, moving on. Item D, zoning administrator, though.
Okay, so Robert reports, uh, you have it around the screen. He issued eight I L Ps this month. There's eighteen uh, over the year. It's the listing of the eight this month. I don't have any. Real deep knowledge on any one of his questions, as you can see, it's mostly. Decks and garages, which are difficult this time of year. So that's that, on the Plan Commission, I'll give one activity for the month on uh, one oh six uh. Apparently code. It's just administrative subdivision and to make a bot next to the home and they're just straightening some lines up. Uh, if they're usual or. Uh, maybe typical, as we know, it's like, yeah, so they're straightening some lines, but then. Um, all the code requirements. Our next meeting um, is August first, or that being the Plan Commission. And we expect probably two zoning sessions that will be coming out. Must be getting out to everybody and through the whole application process. Uh, the B C A had their meeting, uh, June thirteenth and primarily discussed uh, variance of voting form. Um. And then with that, in terms of the voting form, I think I mentioned last time, Robert did some work on the I T side to try and. Uh, improve uh, usability of the form. Still have the physical printed form that they can submit. Uh, plus the process of downloading and typing in your information and uploading. But he's developed this um, form that uh. Now I just be able to click a link. And this is what it will look like. It's up on the screen. And uh. There's one for the Plan Commission and one for the B C A. Still tweaking it a little bit, making sure it makes sense. And there's room for people to type in, uh, rationing out, um. That's the case. I could uh, do this real quick. I mean, you have, there are some. Required, uh, so let me just uh. Show you, so this is the planning commission form, so you, you have the option to make your information. Anonymous, I'm just uh. I think some simple stuff with three quarter. Put into your contact. And then um, recommendation as support or oppose. Option. Then um, there's a checklist of your areas of concern and what I'm gonna work with Robert is that I'd like to put. Then um there's a checklist of your areas of concern and what I'm gonna work with Robert is that I'd like to put um a comment. Between behind each one of these, because I think we find that a lot of people just quickly. Check out boxes with no rationale as to how they did or what their thought process is, and I think I'd like to sort of encourage or prompt them to do that. Um so that's something that we'll probably put in before we. Go live, because right now they're only in one air area for consider our comments and like have for each one. So that's the uh planning commission um document and I can jump over to the B C A, same thing here, there's still some. Work to be had, I think it's a bit confusing, we have a script double negative uh process that's really um. Indiana law, I guess I'll call it. Do the same thing, I don't trade for it. So there's three findings of facts, probably everybody recalls and we got finding of the fact here um. I guess it looks like Robert already fixed one area up, so again, it's a little bit of a negative question, you know, will not be interest and you agree or disagree. Some comments and uh user value of the area adjacent to uh will not be affected for your disagree. Then uh. It's strict uh. In terms of practical difficulties. And then you support or recommend, so really, I I think you want to go through, if one were to agree on each one of these. Then you could expect a person to support the recommendation, just want to make sure that's logical. So the intent is uh we'll get this cleaned up a little bit and probably within eight, we'll send it out to all of ours, so the town board, the P C and the B C A. And as a practice, they'll even say test, you know, so it won't be a question, so we'll send it out to everybody, allow you all to go through the motions. Information will come to Robert, he'll he'll be able to compile it. You guys can note any concerns and email or send some means to Robert so we can improve that. And then if we all think it makes sense, we'll make this go live. Potentially um prior to the next planning commission meeting, the August first, eleven of July, I think we got a segment. Know it out by. Two weeks prior to the meeting, I'm not sure it was standing, but uh. If if we can work the timeline, we'll have that um. There you go for the next planning commission, which I think if you have two zoning um. For pulses, which will probably get a fair amount of feedback. Based on the nature of where I've seen, I think. So that's where we're at on that. And let me continue with Robert's report.
And on that, Phil, I think once, you know, you guys decide to move forward with that form, um what we might want to do is just put uh announcement on the website, so. Whatever, if Robert can work with Jen to get something um just kind of ahead of time, then. This platform is going to be used moving forward for claim commission and B C A. And that links will be embedded.
Yeah.
At whatever verbiage you want, but I think especially since you, you know, know something's coming up on August second. If there's something we could put on the website in the beginning just to let people know that this change is happening.
And again, we're not going to remove any of the.
Yeah.
Uh existing means of feedback, this would be hopefully improved.
And I think that's exactly what a part of what you would want to stay is, you could still do this, this or this, but we also have this more automated.
Sure, alright.
Process.
And just while you're thinking about the tweets and stuff like that too, but we use. I use the Google, Google forum, this for work, this is a Microsoft. But as you're going through there and you've got the different options for the choices for the answers, you can tie that, so if they say yes. To this question here, it will lead them to another question, but you don't even have access to it if you hit no. Or we'll do vice versa, so you can have it layered, so it will actually take you to the information that you want to.
Yeah, I don't think uh. Issues, but that's.
For example, support. With like support, you must agree to the previous three questions.
Yeah, and it'd be.
And support would be.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, that'd be a good way.
I bet James got it, because they're beating against each other. They're beating against each other.
Okay, the last point, just in the notes, um. I had an issue with a permit he wanted to make everybody aware, it was an error on his part, which um. He spoke to me early on, I think he may have talked to George as well, he was a little upset and embarrassed and certainly um. Concerned about what happened here, so on thirty-six West Clear Lake Drive, there was a permit that he issued air. Um the people wanted to put a small storage shed um of compliant dimensions, however. Um there was a piece of concrete that was installed a number of years ago, apparently was not compliant. It had laid idle for. A long time, well over five years, my understanding. Robert went out and looked things over and it's in compliant with the side yard setback, which I think is. Uh five feet, that's in compliance, however, uh rear. The setback requirement is twenty and it's only at seven. And he didn't pick that up um. And then he's, but he issued the permit and the people have constructed the uh shed. So he spoke to me right away, we talked through it, that the lot behind where this uh construction is is conservative. So Robert, I talked through it, so yeah, it's clearly a violation, but. There aren't any residents that are impacted, conservative measures, they're terribly concerned by having that setback, so. You know, it's unfortunate issue, um but they've got best in building there. Um my editorial and the people that made the submission, they they knew their violation. And maybe took advantage of what Robert may knew or just lost of history um.
Yeah, if I could stop you for a second, uh the the neighbors in the area are very upset about this because a stop work order was issued. Years back and actually they started construction and stop work order made them deconstruct what they began with. So they knew exactly what they were doing and just somehow Robert got a good deal. But the neighbors remember the stop work order vividly and they came to me. It was up in arms and so I called Robert and there's where we are.
So again, unfortunate situation, Robert learned, you know, how to keep uh. Continue vigilance on people's requests and I encouraged him to. Of work, you know, have a second set of eyes at Guy or myself or really anybody on the board if he's. Right, has another set of eyes always helps. Um so that's uh that's what's there, okay.
So vigilance was the root cause, lack of vigilance?
I I would say yes, yeah. Um and then uh lastly, you know, he did send a letter out to sixty-six West Clear Lake, there was some storm damage and some other. Um maintenance that needed to be done, they they completed to make a couple of maintenance items, but that small old shed that's there does have the roof that that got. Um damaged and uh he sent him a letter, they have thirty days to repair that and. Clock started, I think, last Thursday, so. By mid-July, they should have that completed, they they did do some of the cleanup work that he asked fairly quickly. And then lastly, the huge property, if those who have been by it, that continues progress of being.
The roof. Sorry, the roof just. Some of them will off the ground and up there, this would be.
Every day, but when I gather, they're weekenders, they're weekend warriors, they're up there on Saturdays and Sundays when I see them, so they're making progress and. Um believe to be on track, I think they tend to be. Under roof with windows and shingles and siding by the end of the year, Robert just keeps plodding along there, make sure they're doing their thing.
And I have noticed, they've uh they have been over there a little bit, trying to beat now. They're trying to pick them down, I mean, they're not very.
Yeah.
But I see some, I see some traffic and and some action over there, at least in the evening.
Yeah, alright, that's good. So I haven't had to send them along all the areas, so that's kind of nice.
Might have to send one of those somewhere else.
Um that did.
Just circling back on the thirty-six West Clear Lake Drive, I just want to make sure that the the neighbors were informed of their rights, petition, decision.
Uh not to my knowledge, I I have not.
He has spoke to them, um but I I he didn't tell me that he informed them of their rights, I think he just told them that. He apologized, he took full responsibility and um. That's all I had heard.
Yeah, so that they, if they did choose to petition, it escalated to council. Which is probably some appropriate if they're.
Have Robert do is to formally.
I just, you know, I think it's important that the folks know what their rights are, that's all.
Okay.
It's not like that property gets different owners.
They just don't want to come back, you know, in the future and and used. Used against us, so this.
Okay, and I guess I would just like to say, um thank Robert for. Publicly addressing his error and, you know, letting us know so we didn't find out about it. In other ways, I think that's how the learning from a mistake is. Corrective action, you know, he probably won't make that mistake again.
Yeah, he is very responsive to.
And to put it in this regard, I think that's important for us all, for all of us to know and for all of you in the room.
Anything else for Bill? Alright, moving on, superintendent's report, Guy.
Um I worked a hundred and sixty hours this month, I issued people have cut permits. No demo permits and set up letters of non objection. I did fifty locates, I have six alarm calls, um replaced three grinders, I set up zero and repaired zero. Um. I have twenty-four pumps on hand, six are set up. Sixteen are still boxed and I have two of the remaining factory left as of last Wednesday. Um average daily flow was thirty-six thousand two hundred and thirty-nine gallons per day. Super truck mileage was a hundred and eighty-three and uh street truck was two hundred and fifty-four.
My only question is, did you have to um have anybody come help you? I didn't notice it on the voucher.
Well, they're they're gonna be a month, at least a month behind. But every time I changed a grinder, I had somebody to help me.
Okay, if maybe, if you don't mind putting that somewhere in your report moving forward, especially since we're a little bit further, I think that will allow all of us from council. That way we're not saying, hey, Guy, can you go back and see how many uh hours we've had?
Right.
Somebody else to help you.
Be small.
Yeah, I figure, yeah, and we could go, you know, Nathan can look at the. And pull that, but maybe if you could add that to your report would be helpful, just as we're looking at how things are rolling.
And I've gotten outward, if it's a questionable one, I come and check it out before I call anybody like the one I had decided it, so.
The homeowner was very pleased, I think anybody that's looked on now.
Well, that one was in board, that was a Friday night.
For Friday night, yeah, Friday night, and McCracken's here, most thankful to you for it, so thank you.
So, the one Saturday, they could have swore, they swore the sewage running into the lake and it was not, it's just uh black goo. That was it. Yeah.
Guy, you you and I talked this morning about the the pump inventory.
Yes.
And I'm still not, after we discussed it, uh if you look at your numbers, you said we have twenty-four new eh new or repaired and ready.
Yeah.
Uh we have sixteen still in the box.
Yeah.
So twenty-four plus sixteen, you said you set up six, so does that get added to the number?
Okay, no.
I'm trying to figure out how many pumps we we have.
We have. Sixteen that are still in boxes.
Yeah.
We had this, and we're, and that's not what's there now because we've changed pumps since I did my.
Okay, but since the re, yeah, as of the report date.
There is sixteen in boxes.
Yeah.
There was two remanufactured left and there was six new pumps set up. It's I, in the actual one that's up there, I missed a number.
Okay.
I told you that earlier, I corrected it on my side, that's.
Twenty-four is the total, total number, oh, maybe we had a few.
Yes, because if you do it manually, we had forty-eight, they could, no, we're gonna have to add to under your shot.
Okay.
Perfect, thanks. And I wouldn't have the problem if we had forty-eight.
I'm in the story to you.
Okay, thanks, that's very helpful.
I noticed the uh guy had a metric, it reflected with his actual.
Robert? Do I know the metric? Yeah, it's, I got it all wrong, yes.
Okay, maybe it's on this thing, but you said it was thirty-six thousand.
Yeah, thirty-six, two thirty-nine is our number.
Yeah, that's about five thousand gallons, that's from previous years.
And there was a lot of Memorial Day weekend, there's a lot of people out here, but there's, it wasn't. As many as I've seen in the past few years.
It was, no, the light wasn't that, I mean, I think I'll listen.
I never.
And it was really nice, but.
I didn't manage to get called out till.
Anything else for Guy? Moving on, council member reports.
I covered H R. I have a couple items to go over, but not relative to you.
Mine, I incorporated. Pre- or dialogue.
Right, I can give a, just a brief uh. Summary of this last month's road committee work. Um so far, we've met a total of eight times. Since the road committee was uh established. Uh during this last period, we did make uh. I won't call it good progress, uh we did release the governing set of requirements. Which basically addresses uh what we want to see in our roads from a surface perspective, lifespan. Uh temperature extremes that it needs to survive in. All of the relative drainage uh type requirements, structural and. So that was a big piece of work that the road committee got their their arms around at least. Uh we also were able to validate uh the prioritization tool, this particular tool um. Takes uh entities into it and rats and stacks all of the the segments of roads. And uh uh produces a result of a five, ten, fifteen year plan. Um and also the process uh that Guy will employ once we give it to him, if the council agrees, is that has a annual update process that goes with it. So that it's always refreshed and we can infuse into the decision. Um results of that tool and the unique situations that may pop up here and here uh for a particular segment. So that was another nice piece of, just curious, what would the definition of a situation? Okay, uh the one that's in there right now is uh the drainage issue of one seventy-six, one seventy-eight West Clear Lake Drive. Uh that's a good example of what would be. And it and it uses those things as uh gives us the ability to uh escalate its viability.
Or we find out because we're now doing more and that Clear Lake Cove has no base, right? You're gonna, that would be under that unique situation, okay, yeah, just curious.
And and soon you will see all of the details, there's criteria for each each rating uh that goes with the tool. Um and then what's left uh to complete is we've got a draft road policy. Um that we've already uh got comments back from the committee members, so we're mature in that. Uh towards its final version. And then we've also got a draft in place that we're calling the Road Segment Design Standards Process. Essentially, this document uh is an end to any process that takes. Um our roads uh from identifying the road projects uh that we want to uh 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 look at in the coming years. How do we assess those road segments for compliance against those governing requirements, in other words. Uh that kind of scopes the effort associated if the base underneath that road is. Uh, that kind of scopes the effort associated if the base underneath that road is proven to to meet the the requirements and we don't need to dig it out and replace it, those kinds of things. So there's some some smarts in that, um, and then it also takes us through the preliminary, intermediate and final design activities. The bidding, the construction and also lessons finishes up with lessons learned. And then as a wrapper around all of that, it includes how we engage the everybody throughout that process, so. That's a, that's another important document that we're currently, uh, we have drafts. Uh, unfortunately, uh, the schedule uh, looks like we're gonna be about a month later than I had hoped, um. It's not, it's not because of any particular um, non valid reasons, we we basically spent four sessions. Really hammering out the drainage uh, requirements because that's probably the most controversial uh, topic when it comes to roads. Um, and we are now confident that we've got that uh, that set of requirements. Um, well defined and we did stress that those requirements by taking a look at uh. Eight very challenging locations around the lake that have known drainage issues. Um, and then looking at the requirements that that we've established and made sure that uh, we were able to develop a solution. Um, for the drainage challenging areas. And if not, we were able to uh, we would update the requirements document uh, to plug that gap, so. A lot of good work, looking forward to presenting it, but I hope to do that in July, it's probably been a leak in the past.
And would we have a chance to have it before council so we can, before our meeting, so we can review it and what prepared? Plus, you know, whatever questions we might ask.
Yeah, absolutely, um, and if you're interested in keeping track, all of the meeting minutes are posted online. Uh, or through the kind of keep, you know, play by play, uh, looking for, but certainly, uh, the package will be. Was turned into. Okay.
Thanks.
Just a brief update, Dan Darren for the economic council, many of us uh, conducted interviews, uh, for our task group. To support the Stevan County Economic Council today, did receive a preliminary presentation from them. So looking forward to getting the full report, but essentially they took all of the comments from the council members. From business leaders in the communities, um, and look at a varied data approach to it. And qualified certain industries uh, for growth, for maintaining and for. The potential to pull into the area to help support the needs of the community as a. Was uh, it was good to see the initial, but uh, I don't wanna see the, I wanna see the end, I wanna see the end results. And then hopefully that's something that I can bring to council once we get back and share with everyone.
The other reports, not we'll move on.
Okay, thank you, uh, I have two questions, uh, one is regarding security, the other is regarding housekeeping, sort of opposite end of the spectrum here. On the security side, I'm curious who has uh, access to the key box of that keeps all the keys to the building? And is there a control log to who has keys?
We have our key log of who has everything and Darren and I and I think Nathan has the code to the key box. I don't have, you don't have, I don't have.
I'm good, I I know what it is.
I think it might be you and I really live once we got it now, because like Bridget had it for emergencies in the basement, it's very extra keys, we're in there.
Okay.
So.
I'd like to see the clerk treasurer have that, and I'd also just be curious, the key log. As to who has keys to, who has access to what I'm just, I'm curious, guy.
Right.
Uh.
Especially since Bridget's moved, you know, put new stuff down there too.
Which another one just started today and I need to get her in the key log.
Okay.
So this would be a good time to maybe read.
Updated.
We just literally updated it. A month ago.
And if if we could just maybe take a look at it at the next council meeting and, and I'm just curious, who has keys to to what around here? Uh, the second item that I have is sort of housekeeping, I had an opportunity to go down to the file room today. And uh, it's almost like Trevor McGee's closet, the only difference is that when you open the door, stuff doesn't fall out, but we're only. A couple more shoves in before things start to fall out, there's a bunch of electronics. Uh, it looks uh, like some of the stuff that we pulled out of here, there's four big telephones all bundled up in a mess. Uh, a big TV and a variety of other electronics. Uh, I will gladly take those to the recycle center, yeah, but I I don't know if there's anything worth saving. If there's anything good down there or if it's there because we're never gonna use it again. Uh, if I could get some direction from any electronic guru in the building as to what we could haul out to recycle, I will gladly take care of that. That's that's the start, then there's some shelves that were set up years past, just turn in the middle of the aisle way and I think we need to do a little rearranging and then uh, work on. filing in the uh, in the video, but get those organized because things are starting to get, you know, shoved in over the.
Yeah, a good example of organization came up today because we were trying to figure out what the next ordinance. Number should be.
Yeah.
And we were trying to go through the ordinance book for the last couple of years. So that's why I made a priority in the next couple of weeks, and like I mentioned, when I was doing my financial course, we need to get the certification of the ordinances. Into a place where we can access them and it is an organized situation, because right now it's a mess.
And parks should have all the, most all the ordinances, right, and know the numbers from previously, so if you.
Yeah, and there's no rhyme or reason, so I'm just gonna have to go through everything.
But that would be a place to check if you needed to. And I am not your electronic guru, so I am shit of a look down in a way.
Both the, you know, who's our electronic guru, we're gonna, only who uh, could say, yep, that TV needs to, or if you go to recycle Robert. If I grab Robert, would everybody sign off that that would be? Like, a good approach?
Nobody that I know with just any uh, knowledge or history on any of that stuff, okay, but. That said, I think a good place to uh, call is our IT person. Uh, some of its uh, old equipment that's he's replaced and just left down there.
Okay.
He could probably offer an opinion.
It's mid, it's a mid sell or mid.
Mid sell.
Mid sell, yeah.
Okay, um, the other thing I'll mention is Washler, uh, our contract with Washler includes one day of electronics pickup.
Oh.
Uh, he will uh, park a dumpster on on the town uh, grounds uh, for one day and anybody uh, of residence. And uh, okay, that loaded, that's so much very good, and loaded up, you know, so you don't need to load your.
Okay.
Seven.
Well, it probably, they're only opening, you know, it's Friday, Friday night, so it's gonna take that to be time for me, so they.
Okay.
That's great, okay, I think it's in August. Well, I'll get it from Robert and myself and um, just go through and and inventory anything that is scrap to scrap and. Set it aside for uh, Washlers.
And that date's been determined already, that was in our contract, we might want to make sure Nathan to have Jenny put that in the next newsletter.
Put on the website now.
And that, right, exactly. And add it to the website.
Electronics, you, all of a sudden you wake up and you're just, you're overwhelmed with that stuff and.
Yeah. Come on, anything to give it out, you know, we're not gonna use it, uh, TV or whatever can go to. Happen there, or something, something along those lines.
Probably the only thing that I was worried about are computers.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a four chamber.
Yeah.
Part, a little more.
Yep. Okay, that was it, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
All your answers, thirty four, nothing.
Okay.
The only thing I have that's known on council is uh, goose roundup has been set.
I I have one comment, if you, if we all bring our attention to the minutes, the second page of the minutes from May sixteen. Darren said he's gonna round up all the geese on the lake. And we're gonna hold him to it.
As a goose roundup. We're twelve of them. Do my best to get all of them.
We keep throwing porn over there, it's still there.
No, but um, typically, an out of the speed, I know you're on the list, George, uh, but. Al Corte is in charge of the water crew and I'm in charge of the land crew. We tend to have a a lot of people that like the water crew, but the hard part is the land crew.
Gotta move them out.
Once you get them in that age and they're not really happy about being in that age, nobody wants to help do that, so. Talk to your friends, some, it's a great time.
One day.
The thirtieth is a Friday, we'll start basically at dawn. Finding them, moving them.
That's something that maybe we can put a reach alert, how you're saying June thirtieth, so let's make something out on Monday.
Yeah.
On that, and where, where to meet and what time?
Well, we really don't have a meeting place until we know where the geese are at, that's the problem.
Well, where do you want your land crew people to show us, that the, maybe I don't know, you gotta tell somebody.
We could do, we could start up here at the town hall and then this, go to where.
Let me get a video credit on Ted's.
Great, Corte get up there with his journal.
We don't have any evidence we can add.
Don't ask, don't doubt.
Yeah, well, quite honestly, with your brand on, it's not pretty, and some somebody would appear complaining about it, so. But anyway, yeah, separate the. That's all I have. Not opening up.
The GIS system that that we're developing, um, I was looking, uh, the road committee was using it to see where the private trains are. I basically didn't find it located on the.
Now, and I won't, because a lot of those private ones, um, you can't see them.
You have to figure out.
Well, like my neighbors got two of them, but you're right, the the grass is over the top of them, so unless you physically walk. Their property, you're not gonna find a door or you don't know where they go.
Okay.
So what we're gonna have.
Fresh.
No, i- if they saw them from the road or they could take a picture of them, they didn't, but they didn't want to trespass on people's property.
Regarding the GIS, uh, I was given a sign on a password that didn't work and I think Nathan, I might have mentioned that to you. And I sort of ran out of gas, I got all of another stuff, so if I could get a, the password and sign on.
Same, same here, because I I tried it, but.
Yeah. Yeah. I get occupied.
You can get to the site, you can stick it in.
Yes, correct. I just need that.
Well, that's, that's in the, that's true, okay, so, so that one's.
I didn't know I had the keys to the.
No, that one you can, the wait, oh, my computer wanted to, so.
Need enough.
All right, uh, yes.
Yeah. Uh, I was just curious if we could get our sign replaced or repaired at the corner of West Clear Lake and seven. Uh, the one that says cottages tend to whatever it's bent and.
As far as I know, that doesn't belong to the town, it's, you know, maybe it might end in a nice, uh, clear association, yeah, okay, briefly also. All right.
So it's.
Okay, good.
Call Mark.
So I don't know how to do this, I'm past the spirit. Um, wanted to take an opportunity to introduce myself, I'm Lee Greenemire, the new director of emergency management for Stevan County. Um, have been with county since November last year, I've reached out to Nathan, uh, wanted an opportunity to come up and and. Talk to you guys, just to introduce myself, and he suggested coming to the town council meeting and it's hard to get there prior. But uh, I'm just, I'm here as a tool, a resource, you guys ever need anything, um. I don't want to take up a lot of time since the birthday of the meeting, uh, but if you ever have any questions about what emergency management does, what it can do for uh, the town of uh, Clear Lake. Um, oftentimes, when we talk about disasters, we talk about the whole community, uh, for me, the whole community is all of Stevan County. Um, and I realize that Clear Lake is, you know, a little community here in the northeast corner, uh, but. Look bigger, broader, you know, you have Fremont, this to the west, you have A Bulles to the southeast or southwest. Um, even Low Village of Mets, which is due south of here where I call home, um. But we're here and it is a whole group process when we have disasters, uh, and I would be willing to come and talk uh, to any of you, my door is always open, if I'm there, the light is on. Uh, please stop in my offices at the county annex building in town, so two zero five South Martha Street, I'm a suite one zero four in the basement. Um, stop in for a cup of coffee or tea, if you want to, if the door's locked or the lights off, I'm probably out. Um, and what I've been trying to do in the last six months is get out and reengage with the communities in the county. I don't know how often or if ever, uh, any of the predecessors of my office have been up here, uh, to kind of say that. They want to be here and be involved, but I think it's important to put a face with names. And as I tell individuals, the the worst time for us to meet for the first time is when there is a disaster. We need to have open lines of communication and I just want to extend that to each and every one of you, um, I already have a working relationship with the town marshal, uh, so. We're, I guess, already ahead of the game, a little bit, uh, you have a great asset and resource uh, sitting there at the table with you right now. Uh, but anyways, uh, you've got my cards, feel free to call me, that's my or my work cell phone there, my email. And again, just thanks for letting me have a little few moments, and if you ever have any questions, give me a call.
Excellent.
Please, please, can I ask a good question?
Fire away.
What would you say?
Is it cyber related?
Yeah, no, it's not, um, I would just say, what are your top two priorities as far as educating the community?
For anything, okay.
What are your top two?
So, when I came into the office, when uh, having the opportunity to sit down with the commissioners, I knew that there would be a lot of community, a lot of relationship rebuilding. Uh, but. We are, Stevan County is a, is a, we're we're a weather prone disaster community, uh, rain, ice, snow, wind. Um, you may not think about it, but we have been impacted by a hurricane, um. And and I I'll tell you why I say that, several years ago, I don't know if you guys remember a hurricane, I would have been around two thousand thirteen ish. Came through, came up the Gulf Coast or came up through the Gulf, kind of followed the Mississippi River on. We got a lot of rain from Hurricane Ike, um, granted it had dissipated, but it was still the storm system was there. So just overall disaster preparedness, you know, and and the level that we have to be prepared for, for all types of disasters. Um, that's through community engagement and just getting out like this. Um, I'm in the process of working with the town of Warwick to actually go over. And and have a sit down town hall kind of meet and greet where we can bring together, talk about things, they asked. What do we do in types of disasters, nobody's ever really reached out to them, um, I have. Uh, the president of the late age live lake associations coming to my office tomorrow, I put together packets of information that I'm gonna give him and then we're gonna set something up for next summer. So, I guess the number one priority is is this, relationship building and education. And getting out to the community, um, I like social media, um, I'm not a big fan of talking to the media. But um, you know, you you have to look at the media. Through a a lens of, I guess, the the idea that it is an animal, if you don't feed it, it's gonna tree up and spit you out, so you either kind of control it or you you let it control you. Uh, but the media can be a resource to get information out and developing those relationships. Um, social media, I use the sheriff's app to try to get stuff out, uh, but I guess certainly back. Education and education, those are my two priorities, however you want to look at it, whether it's in person or whether it's through social media. Of what we have to be prepared for for disasters, and in reality, there are, uh, again, you name it, rain, snow, ice, sleet. Rain, snow, ice, sleet. Power outages, storms, winds. Straight line winds, hail. What was it? An inch and a half golf ball size you guys had up here where the rest of the county didn't? And I would go with the 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 other piece of of education for weather and being prepared for storms is is reporting. And how to report damage, where to report damage, the type of damage. In order for a disaster to be declared, we have to meet the threshold. And everybody wants to call and say, hey, I lost, you know, my, the roof came off my house. I understand that and and I. I can have empathy for you, but you're one of. Almost thirty-five thousand individuals in Stevan County, and that's not going to meet the threshold for a disaster. There's a, there's a point that we have to meet. So it's the important things of. If we have twenty homes in in Clear Lake and another twenty homes in Clear Lake Township. Then we may be starting something a little bit different, you know, that we're kind of talking. So it's word, how to report. And again, that's picking up the phone, leaving a message at my office. Calling Stevan County Communications on a non-emergency number. Not dialing nine one one. And saying, hey, you know, a tornado just went through my house. You know, or a tornado just took out my barn. You you can call and report on the non-emergency number. And then those numbers get to me and then we communicate to the state. So education and outreach.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I was just curious what your priorities are. I think we need to make sure that your, the link to your website. Is on our website and.
Yeah, on your website. Sorry.
Well, the email.
Yeah.
And if there is information, I would just, if there's. General information that people should be aware of here, I think if you could share it with Nathan, we have a lot of people here in the summer, but in the winter. Almost twenty percent of our residents are widow or widowers. So I think if there's some things and many of them are. Pretty good on a computer. So if there's like, here's what you need to know, or here's what you should have in your house. I think those are things that share it with Nathan and we can work to get it on our website if you pass like one page.
Yeah, the one tool that I do have that I've utilized is the county has their own websites, just to be kind of government. And then I have a page on there where I put up information and try to update regularly.
Yeah, if you could share that link with Nathan so we could get it on our website, that would be great.
Can Lee correct me if I'm wrong here? But you also work in coordination with the state and the federal government. Perhaps we talk about weather events and things like that because that's common. That's what we see often. That's what we hear about often. But should there be a national emergency, he will also be our point of contact. Because the state is gonna route supplies, is gonna route things along those lines. To a defense point and he's going to be responsible for making sure that that's set up properly, that the pieces are in place. A good example of that would be the PPE. Here that was in high demand and shortage across the country. The federal government. Divided out to the states, the states then in turn divvy it out amongst the counties. Am I? He's working out a line here.
No. So I serve, I serve at the pleasure of the commissioners. I'm direct report to them, so I have a point. But during times of disaster, I am the channel. That is the liaison, if you will, between state and local. And or federal government. So when they declare a disaster, the commissioners. Everything has to go through my office. So we're communicating and making resource requests. And when the state's coming in, they're gonna be. Looking for me to be able to direct them where to go. You know, they may not always communicate with me, which is fine. You know, it's just an initial point to point. Here I am. And then anything you go through my office. During the the COVID pandemic, since that's the most recent probably in everybody's mind. We did get PPE items from the state. Previous predecessor, the previous administrator from our office, Randy Brown. Did a fairly decent job of distributing. PPE to fire departments, emergency services throughout the county. We still have some. In in storage that are available from that. Also worked, I also worked with the health department rather closely for points of distribution, pods is what they call it. For vaccinations as well. So, but yes, you are correct. I. Some in in the state of Indiana, there are ninety-two EMA directors. There are ninety-two counties. Every county has one. Some of us are referred to as emergency management. Some of us are referred to as online security. It's just the preference of the county. But that's where the connection is, you are correct. Thank you three times.
Thanks, Lee.
Okay, thanks.
We have an emergency management plan. Depending on Clear Lake.
Can I have that? A copy of it?
I'd rather do. I don't know. But it seems like. If you're open to it, it would be good for us to get your perspective on it, where the gaps are, where the holes are.
So the town of Warwick asked me the same thing when I went over there and met with them. And I said I would enjoy the opportunity to sit down with them and look at it. We have not been able to look up yet. But yes, I would, just to see where it is. And and again, from a perspective of, as you've said, where are the gaps for the town of Clear Lake and then how. That incorporates into it and fills in with the county plan as well.
Right.
To make sure that, you know, verbiage is the same or maybe some of the priorities are aligned and and how your piece fits into those of your puzzle.
Right.
Yep. No, I would enjoy the opportunity to do that.
Okay, I'd enjoy the opportunity to be part of that meeting as well.
All right. Anything else? Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's not allowed to make a motion to adjourn the meeting. And point clear.
Origin out second motion.
Oh, he looks like an all of the papers.
I had it.
Those things. There it is. Good evening, everyone.